...two thousand and eighteen. This meeting is being audio and video recorded per the open meeting laws of Massachusetts. First off tonight, we have the Preserve at Abbeville and Abbeville Commons. Both these projects are going to be continued. Joe, could I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue the hearings for Abbeville Commons and Preserve at Abbeville to seven PM on, what do we have the?
The fourteenth.
On the fourteenth of November?
Yes.
Yes. And where will it be located?
At the KP Middle School.
At the KP Middle School.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. And that was both the Preserve and Abbeville Commons, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I said both.
Joe, would you also then please open up the next public hearing, which is for Norfolk Station LLC for a comprehensive permit at one ninety-four Main Street?
Yes. Notice hereby given in accordance with Chapter forty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws and any of all amendments thereto that a public hearing will be held by the Norfolk Zoning Board of Appeals in the auditorium of King Philip Mills School at eighteen King Street, Norfolk, Mass. on October seventeen, two thousand and eighteen for the following application. Norfolk Station LLC at seven PM for a comprehensive permit filed pursuant to MGL Chapter forty-B and the regulations. Can't even hear that word.
Promulgated.
Promulgated, okay. Thereunder for the construction of seventy-two, age-restricted fifty-five-plus rental units in a single-three-story building, the rental units will be an even mix of one and two-bedroom units. The applicant proposes that twenty-five percent of the units will be restricted as affordable. The property is located at one ninety-five, excuse me, one ninety-four Main Street, consisting of two-point-five acres within the B-one zoning district. Reference assessors map fourteen, block forty-nine, block fourteen.
Thank you, Joe. This is the project over at one ninety-four Wheel called Bort's on that building area. The applicant has asked, he wants to go back, he's gonna look at his plan, wants to look at his number of units, look at his septic system, and make sure he has everything in order before he comes before the board. So he asked, would we mind a withdraw without prejudice until a future date? And then he'll come back before the board again. So could I have a motion to withdraw without prejudice, the comprehensive permit for Norfolk Station LLC?
I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice, the application for the comprehensive permit for one ninety-four Main Street.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is Tommy here? Where's Tommy? Amy, can we, can we have? Tommy, do you mind if we, we're supposed to start to continue the enclave hearing at seven-ten. Would you mind if we asked Bob Bullock, the DPW Director? He wanted, he has to meet with the selectmen tonight, so he wants to present before the board a change in the comprehensive permit for twenty-five Rockwood Road. Would you mind giving him five or ten minutes?
No problem.
Okay. Okay. At this time, Bob McGee, would you mind coming forward, presenting to the board the change in the comprehensive permit for twenty-five Rockwood Road?
Sure. I'm wondering if, at the same time I explain this, if maybe Amy could Google Earth and do a street view of Rockwood Road, twenty-five Rockwood Road? And while that's going on.
Give music.
Interesting. Anyways, I don't know. Does everybody have a copy of my request?
Yes.
I did make copies, in case you didn't have it, I could pass it out to those who don't have it. Looks like Joe. But anyways, with regards to twenty-five Rockwood Road, the village, the board was good enough to negotiate some work within the right-of-way related to that project. And what the board did to you, that is you people, just a joggy memory, was to have the developer install a sidewalk from Rockwood Road, the bottom of the driveway going into the village, to the train station. And at the same time, we had a need in a project that the selectmen had approved, was, I didn't present to the selectmen, I was going to present it to them for their approval, was a site improvement to the intersection just down the street, a couple hundred yards of Rockwood Road and Boardman Street. The problem there, and I'll just describe this to you, has been going on for some years now. You know, the school is right down the street. For some years, the police have had to put details up at Rockwood Road to direct traffic, both in the morning and in the afternoon. When it came to, it came to, you know, it came as a cost to the town, and it was really not a long-term solution. So as you come out of Rockwood Road, whether it be school buses, or, I'm sorry, if you come up Boardman Street from the school, and you try to take a left on to Rockwood Road, or even navigate yourself across the street, it's just a terrible line of sight there. There's a piece of property that if you look at the back of my passout, or somewhere in there, there's an aerial view. And but what we're proposing to do, with or without this negotiation of projects here, is to clear the land and improve the line of sight, not just eliminate the trees along the line of sight running along Rockwood Road, but also to drop the grade, stump the tree stumps, drop the grade, and grade that out. And it would increase the sight almost halfway down to Tucker Road, if you're familiar with the situation. Included with that, we were proposing to put some flashing lights with a reflective speed limit. So in other words, if you were coming down the street, you were going forty miles an hour, and the speed limit's thirty-five, above thirty-five, the flashes would go on, remind you of your speed, and help slow that down. So the two things along, you know, the queuing of the flashing light and both the line of sight improvement, and not to mention that we just paved that intersection, there was a real drainage issue there, if you can remember back, just this last winter. We just think that would be a far better project than putting in a sidewalk, at least at this time, for a project that, and I talked to the developer, who was, I don't see him in the, Beshear, who has agreed to do the work, swap off the obligation of the sidewalk to the DPW. In other words, in short, he would do the work at that intersection, and I would do the sidewalk work needed at the bottom of the village, twenty-five Rockwood Road. So what, as part of this, as part of my request, I put in there whether we even needed that sidewalk at Rockwood Road. And I'm telling you that not just because we're trying to get out of the work, it isn't anything of the sort. But if, I don't know how we're coming along with the street view, but if you do get on to Rockwood Road there.
And we're talking about the entrance from the new development?
Right.
To the train station?
That's right.
On the west side of the street?
That's right. As you come down twenty-five Rockwood Road, you take a right-hand turn onto the new sidewalk, and then make your way to the train station, which was probably only about two-hundred yards up the street. And it's, I'll just go along and explain it to you, but if you can get that street view down to Boardman Road, Boardman Street, or halfway down.
Need a faster car.
Yeah. I've got photographs here, too. If this doesn't work out, I can just pass this around. Yeah, that's. This is a new employee, and I mean, no. Just kidding there, Barry. But if that's it, if that's Rockwood Road right there, this is, just focus me to the right as we're looking at this, if you can. Nope, yeah, yes, you're doing it right. Yep, see that car coming up the street? Well, this car coming up the street, typical of any car, a bus coming up the street, has a hard time making a right-hand turn, excuse me, has a hard time making a right-hand turn. And I think you're pretty much all familiar, because there's a real wooded area there. And it's quite an extensive piece of pro, a lot of work into taking all those trees down, stumping it, grading it, because it goes all the way down to the driveway, which is probably a couple of hundred feet. Then we take all the soil out, we grade that, make it sort of like a park lawn area, extended back. It just opens that line of sight. So that's the work that we're proposing there, along with the flashing oncoming light signal that would be on the left, southbound, I believe you'd call it, yeah, right where the finger's pointing, somewhere in there. And maybe two of them either, one to slow you down and one to actually tell you your speed. One other thing about this is, not is it just school buses and parents dropping the kids off and coming out of there, you know, during the course of the day, in the rush hour and stuff like that. When there is no school in, there's sports. There's baseball, there's softball, there was football, and coming out at night after practice, it's an every-single-night problem, trying to get out onto the street. So the two problems, there's line of sight and the speed on Rockwood Road. So we got the line of sight taken care of by the road, by the brush clearing and the tree clearing and grading, and the flashing signal coming southbound. Now, if we could go down, that's enough of that project. If we could come down towards the center of town, Barry, and that'd be in the opposite direction. Yep, and just go down the road. And stop at the, I want to stop first at, keep going at the, what is that to the right? The Village, not the Village, Hillcrest Village. I don't think that's it, is it?
No.
No, just go down, yeah, stop right there if you can, and just swing to the right. Back it up if you can. You gotta turn it around to back it up with that, you know. Yeah. Well, up on the, on the bottom right there, there's a little arrow you can swing, if you click on that. Well, you're gonna have to take my word for it, everybody, so. Bring it down a little bit. So there's Hillcrest Village. And what we did there when we paved the street, and this is a two thousand and thirteen photograph from Google, we had just paved the streets, it's unfinished, we put those sidewalks there to the right, if you remember, where they're almost underwater. In other words, they were lower than the street, the water would come off the street, puddle there, and it was almost impassable sometimes during icy conditions and stuff. And that's very heavily used, I see it every morning, people are trying to get to the bus stop. So what we did for the people at Hillcrest Village was, that's enough sidewalk that we could negotiate, we got them around the corner, we put that crosswalk in, and if people coming down from Hillcrest Village could cross the street, then they could make their way to town. So that was suffice for that. So if you turn around, and I'll get to my point, if this, we can continue down towards the center of town, and go to where the Village, the proposed Village is. Yep, just a little bit more. And just give us a view to the right if you can, just, no. Gonna have to turn around again. But just a little bit more if you can. GIS specialist, huh? Stay right there for a minute, before we, before I lose you for a half an hour. If you can see the, one of the, what am I proposing as opposed to the sidewalk, is that we come, when the Village is made, that we do the same thing as we did at Hillcrest. And like I said, the option is yours, we're good enough to negotiate this deal for us, we can certainly put the sidewalk in. But I'll tell you what we're gonna go through is, the people like at Crest, Hillcrest Village, the people at Village can do the same thing, we come down and make a crosswalk, go over to the sidewalks that are already there. And the only reason I'm suggesting that is because it's, there's just not enough space on the left. Now, these houses and the people that have lived there have been well-developed, live in there and for some years now, and I'd have to really take down some walls, some fences. Unless we squeeze, squeeze the sidewalk in this little space here, there's only about six or eight feet, it would have to be done with vertical curb, the, to get through there. So in other words, if I, if I left the berm there, which is just a slight rise in berm, four inches, anytime you have a situation like that, what we like to do is put in a three-foot loom border, at least minimum, and then you put in the five-foot sidewalk, which there is just not enough layout there. So I'd have to take that wall, I'll take those trees out, go around the pool, but the person there, if you can go down the street a little bit, in this house here, and I'm considerate of these people, they've been there for a while, they've got a, if you can just travel down the street, Barry, and focus in on the house in the same direction? Not that way, the other way.
Can I just ask, is the right-of-way, how big is the right-of-way that the town?
Right-of-way is not that big there. I think it's, you know, I'm thinking it's, it's under fifty feet, but I think it's close to the thirty, I'm really not sure. But if you can see this right here, without moving it, you know, to get that, to leave that kind of berm there, curbing, that kind of berm curbing there, in a three-foot strip, you can see that we couldn't get a five-foot sidewalk in without doing some modification to this property, I just don't think it's worth it. The only other thing we can do, and we'd be glad to do it, is we erect a vertical curb and have a full seven or eight-inch reveal on that curb, and then pour like a concrete sidewalk, or even an asphalt sidewalk, concrete if you'd like, up against that. That's the alternative. So something for you to consider.
Is that quite easements, I mean, is that private property that you potentially put a sidewalk on?
No. I think, I didn't lay it out when I did the work, because the street was already there, so I don't go through the engineering part of it, other than I take out some of, some of the curves and stuff. But I'm thinking that, just through memory, the right-of-way is probably right at the fence line. And usually the stone walls that have been there for like the twenty and thirty and hundred years.
So you couldn't put a three-foot loom strip in there, and a five-foot sidewalk, you'd be in this front yard?
I believe you're right, that's right, yeah. And we don't want to do an easement for something like that, it's just not worth it. Why disturb their way of life for so long? And there is also something else down here, Chris, you know well of this, is there's a, there's like a trough, there's a drain easement that goes right under the road, just on the other side of this house. And it, it would, it's, it outfalls, or inlets, right at the end of that white fence. If you went up the street a little bit more, you could see it, but, so those are the options. We put the sidewalk in, but we do it with a vertical curb, and we put the asphalt or the concrete right up flush against it. Or we put the walkway in across, and let the people go across the street to the sidewalk existing. And again, you know, it'd be cheaper for the, for the DPW not to have to do it and get that intersection developed, but it's not about that. It's just, you have a sidewalk there, and there's just not a lot of space.
Good.
That's my story.
All right. Thanks, Bob.
Okay.
Questions from the board for Bob? Go for it, please.
Question I have, if you were to install the vertical grinner curb, would you have to saw cut off from that, on that pavement to install?
Yeah. Probably would. So I'd, you know, because you want an aesthetic finish, I'd probably go back and find some transition area where I'd have to go. So the berm goes up like a foot, it just raises up from the sidewalk, you know what I'm talking about? Probably go on the gutter line and saw cut that right there? Because you need a little room in front of it to put gutter lock in, and that's concrete truck comes down, when you put the vertical curb in, they pour concrete along the front. And then you, you take the pavement, you overlay the concrete. So you're right, I would have to saw cut just about down the edge line, that white edge line you're looking at.
Could I also ask if, if you were to put a sidewalk in there, whereas the sidewalk could have to butt basically the street, whereas that's a, you know, pretty good-sized street?
Right.
Would you also require some sort of a guardrail? I mean, people would be walking inches into the street, you know what I mean?
No, I don't, no. I mean, you can see that once in a while, but that's real abnormal to have a guardrail at the curb line. It'd be on the other side, and then it's kind of like too late if you get, you know what I mean?
I mean, it just seems like a sidewalk would be so close to the street, you know?
Right.
Kids are pushing, shoving, hawcing around.
Yeah.
Something could easily get pushed off that street, just, I don't know.
Well, that's, it's kind of like why I'm trying to talk you out of it. It's, you know, it really has a city appeal when you have the vertical curb and you have the concrete up against it, or a real downtown area. So if you go down in the downtown area, you'll see that. But it's just a little bit more rural and country out here.
Do you propose putting in just a sign that says crosswalk with an arrow? I don't, not a light in it, just a crosswalk?
Where I'd put the proposed crosswalk?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Where it's on the ground, I know, are you proposing also just to put a sign there that says crosswalk?
Yeah, usually it's a sign that you can see with a person, it's kind of like a...
Bob, when is the work gonna take place over at forty, forty-two Rockwood? Is that gonna happen right away?
Well, I had to negotiate a right-of-entry with the, and I haven't got that signed yet, but the property owner, I think it's at forty-two Rockwood Road, is just as excited about this as we are. So I need to get a sign of entry from them, and I need Beshear to know that you have signed off on it. We'll want to get this done probably before Thanksgiving.
Okay. And will the DPW be coordinating this, or will Beshear actually be?
All of it.
Coordinating this?
I'll be, we'll be out there on foot, for sure.
You'll be out there?
Yeah. Beshear's great, I seen his action, and his contractors are like first class, so I have no doubt this will be a nice finished product.
Okay. Great. All right. We'll probably try to deliberate this tonight, Bob, and discuss it, and then we'll get back to you tomorrow.
Thanks for everything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. Do we have, yes, before, before you leave, Bob, any questions from the public?
Chris Henry, thirty Boardman Street. I'm sure everybody remembers, we debated this seemingly endlessly during this project, safety being a real concern. We've got, how many units total?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. So X number of people in and out, the whole pitch on this project was bring people to the downtown. Well, we've got to have a way to get there. The sidewalk was something that was negotiated at the time, that Beshear agreed to and said that he would do. I can appreciate the town saying that they're going to take that on, but frequently sidewalk projects are the ones that get pushed aside and don't end up happening. I felt at the time, as I do now, that that sidewalk is a necessary safety issue for the people coming in and out of there. I also think it's a great opportunity to connect that sidewalk from Hillcrest Village all the way to the downtown, without the need for those people to cross the street. Not only the people from Hillcrest, but the Walker's School is right there, that's plenty of people coming in and out through there, I think it's a real safety issue, I think there's an advantage to sidewalks on both sides. Beshear had agreed to do the sidewalk, that would get that project done. He also agreed to the flashing light as one of the conditions that you guys put forward. So now we're taking both of those conditions and saying the town's gonna do it in exchange for this. I would like some assurances that that work will actually happen.
I think the comprehensive permit is very clear, and Bob put in his proposal is, regardless of whether we agree to or don't agree to continue with the sidewalk, it will, if it is done, it will have to be done before the first occupancy permit. So you can be well-assured that's a sidewalk project, if it does happen, will occur, because he won't be able to get an occupancy permit on any of those thirty-two units.
On which side of the road?
That's for the board to discuss this evening. But your question was sidewalk projects go by the wayside.
They do.
He can, regardless, depending, the comprehensive permit currently says the sidewalk has to go in before the first occupancy permit. So if the board decides that, yes, we want the sidewalk to remain, it will not be delayed, because it will have to be done before the first occupancy permit. So it won't go by the wayside.
Okay.
Okay?
And if, but if the board decides to waive it, then, then it won't happen?
That's, that's up to the board. Okay? You're welcome to stay for the deliberation after the enclave hearing. Any other questions from the public? Say again?
Yes, you're not gonna deliberate that now?
No, we have, we have other hearings, we just, Bob has to meet with the selectmen, so we, we're not gonna deliberate that now. Okay? Any other questions with regard to twenty-five Rockwood Road and this proposal? Okay. Thank you, Bob, for coming in. Okay. Now we'll continue with the comprehensive permit for the enclave. Mr. DePlacido, thank you for your patience.
Good evening, Tom DePlacido. I'm here tonight on behalf of Norfolk Holdings LLC to actually present to the board some changes to and revisions that were done to the enclave as a request from the board. With me here tonight is Josh Swirling and Matt Murva from Bowler Engineering. And over the last few weeks, we've, we've been able to, when we presented this, it was more of a less, a concept, this is what we think we could do, a sketch, and Josh, and Bowler, and Matt, that now had the opportunity to go do testing, do some engineering, and to make sure that we can do that. We wanted to present that to the board before we go and finalize plans, and also had the opportunity to meet with a few of the neighbors and some of their comments, and actually tweak those into the plans as well. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Matt Murva, and he can present those minor revisions and changes for you, and discuss the plans and tell you where we're at.
Amy's just gonna pull up the files that we emailed earlier today, which are the plans you're looking at in front of you. Bear with us one second. Perfect. Thank you. So as Tom mentioned, we've made some adjustments to the plan. When we were last here, the version of the plan you were looking at was a hand sketch with twenty-six lots. We're still showing the same twenty-six lots, we've just been tightening things up based on some engineering that we've been able to do since the last time we were here. The twenty-six lots that we're showing on this cul-de-sac road would each have private septic systems, which is what we had contemplated when we spoke with you last, but what we've done now is actually shown sizing for those septic fields that you can see outlined in front of those units. And those are based on preliminary testing that we've done. We're actually gonna be performing witnessed testing first week in November, at which time we'll be able to tighten up the design on those septic fields. But for now, we've used a conservative rate of fifteen minutes for the perk testing, when really the perks that we've done in the field had shown rates of two to twelve. So we feel like we're on the conservative side, but we'll vet that all out with the actual witness testing and provide final designs on those septic fields as we move forward here. Some modifications to the plans that we wanted to run through, though, we've actually increased the landscaped buffer between the homes to the north of the, sorry, my pointer's not quite making it, okay. So the houses on the north side of our roadway, there's actually a fifty-foot undisturbed vegetated buffer that will remain now, and we don't begin our grading until this line you see right here. So I'll zoom in on that, on the grading plan, on the next sheet, but just wanted to point that out, that we, we've pulled the houses away from that edge and created a more significant buffer along there. We've also maintained within the property twenty, fifteen-foot setbacks to internal property lines, and we've also got a minimum of twenty-five feet to the outer property line for setbacks to those homes. All of the houses outside of the, wetland buffer for the south. And all of the septic fields will be outside of that buffer as well. We were out on site doing some preliminary testing on the soils to check for stormwater capacity and how we'd be able to do those designs. Josh Swirling can speak in detail if you have any questions on that, but we've, we've determined that the soils on site are gonna allow for, for us to design the drainage as intended, with some deep-sump catch basins, sediment forbays, and infiltration areas to reduce runoff rates and volumes. So all that'll get more detailed design as we move forward from here, but just wanted to indicate to you that we've done the initial testing that will, will show that those systems will, in fact, work where we're showing them. As I mentioned, we're gonna be doing the witness testing on November fifth for the, for the septic fields. And in terms of the grading, Amy, if you could flip to the next slide, if you don't mind? Actually, two more. It won't let you scroll down any more than that? Well, that's unfortunate. Next, there's a sheet after this that shows the proposed grading.
That's the one that has the lines, one ninety-four, one ninety-six, one ninety-eight?
That's correct, yeah. Okay. There it is. So we've been trying to achieve a balanced site in terms of cuts to fills, so that there's no export, no import, and this preliminary grading plan is showing just that. So we're actually, the houses along the north side of the subdivision road are sitting down lower than the houses up along Village Green. So the house elevations, sorry, my pointer doesn't seem to be working here. Thanks. So the house elevations, sorry, my pointer doesn't seem to be working here. Perfect. So these houses sit down at about elevation 200, 202, and up at the property line here, we're more like 214, 212. So there's a significant drop in grade where these houses are kind of terraced into that hillside. So we're cutting a little bit on this side and using that fill to balance out down on the lower side. And then the units on the lower side here will all be walkout units. So we're making up grade along the sides of those units so that the basements actually walk out to the lower elevation below. So through doing that, we're able to achieve a balanced site, provide room for the leach fields. You'll notice that within that 50-foot area, I pointed out, we're not doing any regrading in this area, so all of that area will remain with the existing vegetation that's, that's We have made some tweaks to the various house types that are going on each lot. That's still somewhat in flux as we tweak some of the designs of the septic fields, but there are various house types. I believe there are four. They're all three and four bedrooms. And we've tried to, again, maximize the dimension between the property line and the back of those homes and provide walkout units at that southern edge. So those are the main changes, I think, since the last time we were here. We'll be providing more detailed engineering. I believe we're targeting, once we have those septic, those witnessed test pits back, the information from those, we'll be finalizing our designs so that we can get those submitted back to you, and we can have time for, for peer review, hopefully before our, our next hearing. With that, Tom, if I missed anything, feel free to jump in, and we're glad to answer any questions you might have tonight. Yes, sir?
What's the mix of three-bedroom to four-bedroom? Out of the 26?
Out of the 26. I'm not sure we know exactly yet on that. That's sort of the average, but we'll be refining that with the, the next package that, that you see. We'll have probably unit, unit types specified for each.
There's no two-bedrooms, they're all three or four-bedrooms?
I don't believe there are any twos.
There's no two-bedrooms, but there are some footprints that actually have a massive bedroom on the first floor.
Matt, what was the setbacks? What's the, what's the property size again? And what were the setbacks?
Absolutely. So if you look at the next sheet, and it's a little difficult to see at that scale, but if Amy could scroll back, we show all of the lot sizes on this little chart.
Okay.
Right here. So the lots are all numbered. They start it at 1 up in the corner here and come all the way around to 26 right here. So there's a corresponding lot size for each of those.
What's your minimum setback, though? I thought you said 25 feet?
25 feet from any external property line. So that's our, that's 25 feet right there. Otherwise, we're 50 feet. This one's 25. And then there really are no property lines that we're abutting on that southern side.
What about internal?
Internal, 15 feet. So the, the homes are 30 feet apart at a minimum, so we have a minimum of 15 feet between the property line and the house itself.
The 50-foot buffer, is that going to be like a no-touch buffer that you're going to establish before you start construction clearing? Will there be some sort of fence or something that is going to remain in an eventually state?
Yeah, we would, we would put a fence at that limit of work right here so that there'd be no disturbance beyond that line.
Like one of those orange construction?
Probably an orange construction fence.
So after construction, that would just, there wouldn't be a permanent fence of any sort or any bound?
No, there wouldn't, that wouldn't be the intent.
Okay, but what would prevent a future property owner, then, from going into that area and clearing it?
From clearing the wooded buffer there?
Yeah.
I need to talk with Norfolk Holdings about this, but what we'd probably propose is some type of easement going across there as, that would protect that, so that no more clearing could be done, but only maintenance. So if a tree fell down, you could, you know, obviously clean up a tree and things like that, but that, no other reduction in any type of natural buffer would, would happen in that area.
So would be some kind of restriction on the deed?
On the deed, I think, I haven't discussed this thoroughly with everything, but probably some type of easement that, that restricts, you know, any of those other houses, the new proposed houses, from doing any additional clearing that's in there.
Matt, the roads are going to be how wide? And the driveways are, the main roads, what, 24-wide?
I believe that's 24. I just want to double-check that for you.
And obviously, the one at the entrance to Village Green's going to be wider to accommodate the strip in the center?
That's right. That's a boulevard entrance still, as we'd been showing it in the past.
And the width of the driveways, are they all the same, or?
No, they, they vary, but they're 12 to 15 feet. Some are 18, actually, until you get up to the garage itself.
Is it a two-car garage or one?
Some of them are two, I believe. They're all two.
What's the length of the driveways? What's the length?
The lengths vary. Yeah, the shortest driveway's about 50 feet, and those are, those are the ones just to the north, right here. So they, 50 at a minimum.
1.5?
5-0.
5-0.
5-0, sorry.
Is this going to be private property with homeowners associations open, or is this going to be a town road?
This will be a, this is intended to be a town road.
So how would, so the town would accept the road, the town, I'm assuming, would accept the detention basins. And so how, how, how do you get to the basins from the street? Are you proposing to put in some kind of access easement or gravel path to get in there and clean them up?
So we do have a, an easement to the basin right here that would allow access down into that area. We probably need to propose a similar easement on any other lot. Once those basins are designed fully, we would, we would be including easements to get to those over the private property.
Would the town, though, need a, I'm just thinking in terms of maintenance for that basin? Normally, I think a town would want to have a gravel path of some sorts, and get a piece of equipment down there and clean it up. Have we done this in the past in Norfolk?
We haven't.
I know, I've had experience in my town where we've had that issue, where there's been basins behind the houses, and it's hard to get out here.
Would it be a public willing to, within a 40-deep project?
Yeah.
Anyway, just a little think about it.
Yeah, let us explore that a little bit, Dan. Thank you.
Matt, we had explored at the last hearing, and Tommy, the, the potential for one or two paths coming from the development. One, I think, was going to go to Juniper, and one, the other one, and the other one was looking at going to Rockwood in order to facilitate people being able to get to the school and to the trains. Is that still, I noticed it doesn't show that. Is that still part of the plan?
Are you talking about in, in this direction, to the, to the south?
Yes.
Here's to show that through the property.
We do show a break in the properties where that is a public way, so to speak, that connects the roadway down into the conservation land. We're not showing anything beyond that at this point, but we've allowed for that access through. Go ahead, Tom.
Not to jump ahead, but before we close, well, actually, before we continue the hearing at the end of this session here, what I was going to propose is that sometime in November, we could get the, if this looks good to the board, we could get this roadway staked out. And I know there was at least one or two neighbors that were familiar with egressing the property, the Juniper, with an existing trail, and maybe we could walk the site sometime in November. And I was hoping we could schedule that at the end of this meeting and determine where we could put some type of trail, if, if that sounds good.
Tom, I have a question. Is your concern about a path to those basins more aesthetics?
It can be, yes.
And I just, are there other alternatives that would be acceptable for an access road back to those basins?
We'd have to look into it. There are probably some alternatives. In, in other projects we've done in the town, it hasn't been, an access road hasn't been mandated or anything, but we can look at some, some type of alternatives. There will be some type of HOA here as well, because we have a community mill area, and there's other things that would have to be maintained. So in other projects I've recently done, I've actually given the HOA the ability to mow and maintain some of these detention ponds so they always look good as well. Actually, just did that in a project in Norfolk here as well, so that all the onus is not always on the town, because the town's resources are stretched as they are to try to maintain these basins. And this way, an HOA can go in and mow and take care of it if they feel like it.
Tommy, besides Juniper Land, is there a, is there also some thoughts to doing a, a path to Rockwood Road? I know there's a, the town has an easement rights between 42, I think it's 44 and 48 Rockwood. Yeah. Is there any, is there some thoughts to putting in a, putting in a walkway from that path that's going to go to Juniper, or potentially go to Juniper, to also doing one going to Rockwood Road for allowing people to get to the train?
You say between 42 and 44?
44 and 48. There's actually an easement, the town has an easement on that, an easement to go through there. At one point, they were going to do a street between those two properties.
We can look at it. We haven't done a lot of research on that. But we can look at it, and if it's achievable, it, it looks like it does make sense.
Other questions from the board at this time? Anybody in the audience has some questions? Thank you, Matt. Don?
I just.
Hold on, Matt.
Couple of comments in general, because I missed the last meeting. And although certainly the density of this project is 26 versus 48, or whatever we looked at.
Can you speak in the mic, Don?
I sure can.
Is a lot lower than what we were originally looking at. I just want to say that I'm disappointed because it appears that this board, focusing on the density, in effect encouraged the developer to abandon the age-restricted or 55 and older community. And we have the responsibility as a board for the entire community of Norfolk, and I just feel that our, in our zeal to drive down density, we disregarded some of our seniors. And I can speak on behalf of them because I am one. And at a personal level, I, I'd like to stay in Norfolk, and I'd like to downsize. And I would like to move to a ranch-style development that Tom did such a great job with up in Rivers Edge. And there's not a lot of those around in Norfolk for seniors that want to stay in this town. I don't want to move to Franklin, Plainville, Medfield. I want to stay here. And if I'm going to downsize from a five-bedroom gargantuan home that I pay a lot of taxes on, I'd like to downsize to someplace that's a ranch home, that hopefully I can stay there for an extended period of time. And I also want to own my home. I don't want to rent a unit, a 55 and older. I want to own it. And it appears there's a pretty good demand for that, since in the original proposal that Tom had presented to this community, I believe there were either eight or nine reservations where people actually reserved units of the original 56 that were proposed. Eight of them from Norfolk and one from Medfield. So there's some interest. And certainly, the 40B that was proposed, the 48 units, from a density perspective, was actually 20% less dense than Rivers Edge is today. And Rivers Edge is considered a premier community on an age-restricted basis. The 48-unit proposal for the age-restricted 55 and older included 12 affordable senior units. And that's something that this town is crying out for. We have a large senior population that is living on social security. And it's one thing, it's nice if you can sell your home and turn around and buy a smaller home for 500, 600, 700,000, because if you've been watching, that's what these things are going for. But it certainly would be nice for the community to have some homes that would be affordable in the $180,000 to $200,000 range for seniors who want to downsize, downsize. So I'm disappointed in that. The original proposal, the proposal for 48 units, was basically a self-sustaining community. And what I mean by that is it was providing a, a net to the town of 48 times whatever that might be in terms of taxes, but potentially 300, $300,000 plus, with no impact to the schools. And the proposal included that the homeowners association or condo association would maintain the road. So it was a net-net to the community of Norfolk. It, no school impact, the ability to provide for seniors to be able to walk to the town center and to the train station, and those types of things. So I, I'm, I'm disappointed that we were very quick, I wasn't here, I would have spoke up then, I missed a meeting, we were very quick to kind of just abandon that 55 and older requirement, as I think that's something that Norfolk needs. And, and to the abutters, and I, and I can appreciate if I was sitting there saying, wow, they just went from 48 units to 26 units. Seems like a real decrease in density. However, I would caution the abutters that people with one child don't usually buy four-bedroom homes. And so potentially, this community could significantly exceed, in terms of population, a retirement community of 48 units. And there seem to be a lot of concerns about traffic. And us seniors, you know, we come and go as we please. We don't tend to have to have dual, dual family incomes that require us to get up and make the train or, or get in the car between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00 in the morning and return in the afternoon. So the potential traffic impact could be quite a bit higher for this type of community versus a 55 and older community. And there was another concern I heard mentioned, I watched the, the YouTube of the meeting, and the other concern I heard about was water. People are very concerned about water on Cleveland Street and that whole area. And I can just speak as a, a member of the senior community, that we, we probably do one or two loads of laundry, one every other day, versus when we had three kids growing up in Norfolk, and we probably did three or four a day. We probably ran the dishwasher three or four times, and I can only tell you that my kids took. took showers, it seemed, every 20 minutes. So I just would encourage the board and the abutters and the town at large to take into consideration, if not with this project, because we've already provided direction to the developer to proceed in a different manner, but that we consider the needs of the seniors of Norfolk and the requirements that us seniors have, so that we can encourage and allow people to stay in the Norfolk community when they outgrow their homes, versus having to flee to some of the surrounding communities, who are in fact making arrangements for 55 and older housing. Thank you. Thank you, Don. I would say, Don, that this is, this is not cast in stone. We took into account the residents of Village Green, and we asked them what their thoughts were, and we got a resounding reply that they would prefer less-dense community and not everybody 55 and older. And that was one of the reasons why we asked the developer to go back and look at his plan, and look at a less-dense housing plan. All your points are good, and we, and all of them will be addressed. I don't think we've, we haven't abandoned anything yet, but this was the path we asked the developer to take, to reduce the density and make for a neighborhood that more mirrored what is on Village Green and on Stan Hope now. But it certainly is not cast in stone, so we can still discuss this. Don feels as if we have told the developer that this is the end-all.
Okay. Do we have some comments from the public at large? Mr. Henry?
Chris Henry, 30 Boardman Street. So can we just scroll that image down a little bit? So is that a, like a, some sort of buffer in between, like a greenscape in between the roads at the entrance where it comes in? Nope, the other way. So like, as the road comes in, it's, there's an island in the middle, is that with like trees or something on that?
Right, right here.
Yeah, perfect.
Yes. That's a boulevard, so that's a planted median strip.
Perfect. So my only other question is, is from, I guess, Village Green to the, what's the full developed length of the cul-de-sac? What is the what? The full developed length of the cul-de-sac?
Matt, you can get back to him. Chris, we'll have him get back to you.
Probably around 1,200 feet or so.
I bet you're understanding that the town had a bylaw that said there was a limit, that was like 500 or 600 feet, I call it so.
Yep. They'd be looking for a waiver.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's double?
Say again.
So that's approximately double what's allowed?
Very good. We have, come on up.
Claudia Wilkinson, 25, Village Green. I just wanted to say, in response to the point that Don brought up, there was a very vague idea thrown out a couple of meetings ago, or maybe even three, that maybe you could consider eight to 10 market-rate homes. That is the idea that I remember the neighborhood being excited about. That obviously is not something anyone is pursuing here. With regards to the 26 three- and four-bedroom homes, as far as I knew, I'm not speaking for or against it, but I feel like we didn't have any idea what a traffic study would show, you know, how would the traffic compare 26 three- and four-bedroom homes compared to, is it 58 age-restricted duplexes, or 40 age-restricted duplexes? I mean, there really wasn't enough information, to my mind, to have an opinion one way or the other, whether you want to get rid of the age restriction or not.
I think what they proposed at the last hearing we were at Town Hall was 48 duplexes, I think it was, Tommy? Or?
Forty-eight duplexes, yes.
Forty-eight duplexes?
Yes.
Yes, right, 48 age-restricted. And that was what we, and then we discussed removing the age restriction, and that's when he came back with a hand-drawn of the 26 units.
Right, right. So my point is, you know, it's been bouncing around, and I had no idea whether the number of duplexes was even fixed. Should it be decided that they should be age-restricted duplexes? You know, I wasn't aware that that means, yes, it would definitely be 48. Regardless of how many it is, how do, you know, aren't there not traffic studies that would give us some information to base an opinion on, you know, with regard to what the traffic impact would be?
This is just, this was his initial plan. Everything we've had to do on every other 40B, engineering, traffic studies, landscaping, architecture, will all have to still be done. I think what the developer was looking for from the board was, before he went forward with those, is what type of plan?
Right. Okay, which I understand. So I just wanted, as I said, in response to what Don said, I'm not aware, you know, nobody came and asked me, which do you prefer? So I don't, you know, I don't know who in the neighborhood, and, you know, I'm not complaining, but I don't know who in the neighborhood was overwhelmingly in favor of three- and four-bedroom homes, as opposed to age-restricted duplexes.
I guess, any other questions from the, comments from the public? I'm going to, go ahead, come on up.
Bob Cook, 32, Stan Hope. I understand this letter from Chief Stone requesting another entrance or exit. Any discussion on that?
We have received correspondence from the chief, yes. And he is, he is in favor in over 55 community here.
I thought his, I thought his letter wanted a second way in and out.
I think he said if we, I think his comment, and I don't, Amy, I don't know if you have it with you, is that if we were going to go with an under 55 below, if they remove the age restriction, he would want to see two egresses. I think if, I don't think he said he wanted to see two egresses if we maintain the 55 and older.
Okay.
But Amy, do we have that on the? All right. Let's see if we can take a look at that.
My name is Brad Walker, I'm from 16 Village Green.
Excuse me, couldn't hear you. Go ahead.
Brad Walker, 16 Village Green. In fairness to this process, myself and two or three other neighbors did meet with Tom, and it was our opinion that, given that we had more privacy with this other plan, that the houses were set back further, and there was going to be more trees between our houses. And being at 16 Village Green, I would say that I might be the most impacted, because I've got the road right next to me, and I've got a house right there in the corner. So this was the only plan where they were actually keeping some of the trees and bringing it back a little bit. Because right now, when you look at these diagrams, you can't tell without being out there, but it's very sparse. I mean, it's like saplings, you know, tough falling over, you know, just old-looking pine trees. So when I look back there, it's not thick at all. So it's, it definitely, you know, when you see the diagrams and you see, you know, where it's all the green canopy, it doesn't do it justice at all. So I'd just like to, you know, if you do any kind of site visit, just to keep in mind that the houses are going to be behind me. If they're right up at the property line, there's really, there's really not much cover there at all. So we were in favor that they were actually giving us some privacy, so that way when we're, especially my neighbors, a couple houses down, where they don't have any trees back there really, and their yard extends to their property line, they just have an open yard. And so in these plans, they're basically, we're going to be taking down all, in the 45, 48 houses, they were duplexes, they were going to be coming up right to the property line, and so basically, they had no vegetation. So I just wanted to point out the fact that it was discussed with the neighbors that are directly behind this development.
Thank you. Can you look, Amy? Amy, do you have the, do you have the last rendition that you can bring up on the screen? The one that had the 48 units?
Did you want the last police unit? The last police?
Do you have the police? Mm-hmm. So yes, he said, as you saw, he has said that over, he would, it appears as if he would like to see two egresses, no matter what, whether it be 55 or over or under.
His numbers were wrong in both. He had 55 units, and it was 48 units, and he had 48 units and 26 units.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't think the number of units. Yeah. We have, we've actually tried to set up a meeting with him. It has not worked yet, but we, we will be meeting with the chief to discuss this further, and I'm sure the developer has also plans to meet or talk to the chief. Have you talked to him yet?
No.
Okay, okay.
Tom, can you address the issue of whether you could create a second means of egress to access? And I'm assuming that would, that would require a wetland crossing? Have you explored the feasibility of that?
There would be a couple of potential alternatives that you'd look at. One would be to connect to Juniper, which would have extensive wetland disturbance, crossing, probably at least some type of bridge or something to get there. There was extensive issues with that before, on a prior development that was approved, I think, for 14 or 15 homes years ago as a subdivision. I think it was, ended up in court, and they eventually did get some type of permit for it. But there's just, there's a lot of disturbances to go out that way. Another option that everybody brought up, but it's really not an option, there's another easement that comes off of Village Green, but we have no rights of access to that. And then, I think, Chris, you mentioned 44 to 48, but it looks like the same type of thing, there'd be some extensive wetlands crossings and things to get to that. What was mentioned, and I think makes a lot of sense, is to try to establish some type of walkways and pedestrian pathways, so that, you know, you have the school and recreational fields directly the next street over off of Boardman. If you can make some egress so that children can walk to school or go to the recreation fields, and if there's some type of sidewalk, crosswalk, or something like that, that goes throughout to 44 and 48, that allows people that live here to actually walk up to 115 and go to the, to the train for commuting, and now you're reducing some of that traffic that you normally have in a subdivision that's not as close to the train and things. So I think there's some other ways to mitigate some of that rush hour traffic that you normally see in a subdivision that would be, you know, a couple of miles away from the train or something like that. I think there's some options here that other developments normally would not have.
And just a quick, quick point on the, the number of units. You're at 26, but this is not, but that's not divisible by four, so you're going to have to provide seven affordable units?
That is correct.
You understand that? So that's not really advantageous for you, because you've only got one market to subsidize that last affordable unit?
Correct.
I'd like to, I know Mike is not with us tonight, but I know Mike was a proponent of the under 55, removing the restriction to reduce the density. But I guess I'd like to get a strong vote from the, from the board as to their opinion of this plan, or would they prefer, I don't know if Amy, you can bring back, that's the 48 units?
Mm-hmm.
And those are all duplexes, Tom? Two family, two unit?
Those were all duplex age-restricted units. So there was, there was 48, which would be 24 buildings, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Or do we want to, would the board would like to go back and use this as our template? Don, I'll start with you, since I pretty much know where you're heading.
I already made my comments known, okay? I personally was one of the peoples, and at the time, when we vote on this, I'd have to reclose myself, I actually put a reservation in, which is non-binding, to buy a unit there, because I said, hey, we're going to have some ranch units. So that's how I feel. I would love to see an age-restricted unit, but at the same time, I am certainly very sensitive to, to the abutters and the encroachment that any development provides to the direct abutters of any community that goes in here. So I, if I had to vote, I'd say I'd like to see for the town, I think an age-restricted development is needed. I believe that a 40B age-restricted, which is a very unusual 40B approval, if you look at the state, they don't approve a lot of age-restricted 40Bs, provides 12 units of subsidized or affordable housing. 12, you know, two-bedroom, I believe, Tom, that are all geared towards two-bedroom?
It would be limited to two-bedroom.
Right. For seniors, that from a market guesstimate could be someplace either right around or south of the $200,000 range. Is that?
That's approximate.
Well, I'm not a builder, so, and I think that's, that's a great thing for Norfolk. So, and I, and I believe that the impact to the overall community, and I'm saying this as a senior, but I just, I look at River's Edge, and I look at the impact to that area, and I believe the impact to the total community, and in particular Village Green, would be, I think, less intrusive, not necessarily to the immediate abutters, but to the overall community of Village Green, of Stan Hope, and of Cleveland Street. So that's a long drawn-out yes.
Okay, yeah. Before you get, Tom, what would, what would be, if these were 28, unage-restricted, do you have a rough feel for what the market price would be versus if they're age-restricted? Do you have a feel for what that differential is? In other words, what would these sell for? These under 55, and again, not holding you to it, and versus what would be the age-restricted ones? And as Don was trying to get to the number, what would be the 12 affordable units?
My best guess for the age-restricted market-rate units would probably be in the 550 to low 6 range, somewhere around in there, I'm guessing. The affordable units, I can tell you from projects we're doing in Rantham, is, I think they're at 195, right around there. And that, that gives you about an idea with that. The 26 market-rate four-bedroom homes, I can tell you, we did Nichols Way over off of Holbrook Street in Norfolk. Similar homes would be planned for here. Those were in the upper sixes to mid-sevens. Most all of them were, were at least in the sevens by the time people put in finished basements and other things like that. The one thing I can, I can tell you about the age-restricted project that's before you hear is that... you here is that when we get into some type of condominium project like this, you do need the density and the numbers with some things. If you look at this plan here, you can just look and see the infrastructure is a lot more complicated than just a 12 or 1300-foot straight road going in. You have three different cul-de-sacs, you have a lot more walking trails, amenities, little park. These, you have much more landscaping. You also have a, a larger common, not a wastewater treatment plant, but a wastewater facility that's getting up to eight, 9,000 gallons per day. That has to be put in first. You need sewer in the streets and things to do that. So there's a lot more infrastructure cost when you look at this, and that's where you need the additional units. That's, that's why you have to be up to the, to the, to the high 40s, low 50s, because you're not selling the units for as much and your cost to develop it are more. And that's the problem I was running into when we started getting down into the low 40s or, or, or less.
Thank you. Okay, Joe. I gave you a little bit of a breather.
I'm in favor of the 55 opportunity, at the same time being, you know, you know, working with the, for the buffer with the dejoining properties as best we can. So I would be in favor to see if there's still a way to make this an over 55 development.
Okay. Madora, down at the very end?
Try and get close. I think I've been fairly clear about this to the extent that I've commented, but I would definitely be in favor of having this be an over 55 development. I think that the comments that Don made about it being a relatively cost-neutral impact on the town are not to be ignored. And as a parent of school-aged children, I'd rather have dispersed growth in town of families bringing kids into the school systems, being able to check a 40B box without a direct impact on the school that's going to correlate within a year, two years, something like that. You know, I care about that.
So in favor of the 55?
Mm-hmm.
The way I look at it, I look at the two plans and I see, I think they both have their, their differences, but they also both have some, some mitigation for the neighbors. The plan that we looked at tonight, I think that 50-foot buffer is an important buffer and it really gives some space to the neighbors. And the plan up on the screen over there, if I understand, proposing to have the ranch-style units near the neighbors, those duplexes actually looks spaced out more than the plan in front of us. From that perspective, I think I would tend to lean more towards the 55-plus housing development. I think the, the two mitigations are somewhat comparable. And I think, based off what Don said and what the overall feeling is, I think I would, I, I support the 55-plus development.
Thank you. And Bob?
I like both plans, actually. And I see somewhat of a philosophical question with respect to the age restriction. And I also see a need for, I think, a more in-depth analysis of the economics of both plans as the impact of town. So I'm not really prepared at this, at this juncture to choose one or the other. I like both and what there are questions that need to be further hatched out.
From, we know Mike's perspective. Mike likes center 55. From my perspective, the density of our 40Bs in town, I think, are too great. 106, 106, 108 is very crowded. If you look at 84 Cleveland Street, it's a circle, it's a third of a mile, it's going to have 40 units, it's going to be very crowded. 25 Rockwood Road, 32 units, is also, though it's on six acres, going to be crowded. They're too dense. So anything to reduce the density, to me, was a positive. I understand that people would like to stay in Norfolk, and that takes a lot of weight. We want to have people stay here who have grown up here, who've raised their families here. And I think we both know the density and the effects on that neighborhood are very important. I guess what I would, I would say, Tommy, that clearly without my vote, and my vote would be to stay with the un-age restricted, but it appears as if four of the members, with one abstention, we'll say, Bob, would prefer to look at the 55 and over, so the 48 units. And in that light, I think you're going to have to look at this plan, you're going to have to, the 48-unit plan, you're going to try to have to figure out some way to manage that buffer. And we're going to have to address, and I'll ask for a meeting with the chief as soon as possible, the chief's concerns regardless of whether it's a 55 and over or not, of the two egresses. Is that the feeling of the board? Pretty much? Dan?
Can I ask him a question?
Yes.
Tom, is it possible, it seems like we're talking about two different scenarios, and I'm just wondering if, if the universe of possibilities is greater than two. You know, we're talking about 48 units of age restricted versus 26 units of non-age restricted. What if we had a smaller number of age restricted? I mean, if there's, if there's a desire to keep the density lower, but still keep age restricted, wouldn't it be possible to reduce the density of the age restricted development? In other words, what if you just made the 20, what if you made this 26-unit plan age restricted?
The, the situation we run into is that if we, if we do do that, the, the selling price, most people want to downsize. They're selling their $700,000 or $800,000 home and they're downsizing to something that's maybe 550 or 650 in this area. And we just don't have the, the numbers to, to make that work at that point in time with that. It's, it's, it really is, the 26 allowed us, because we could build a little larger home, a higher selling price with it, allowed us to actually reduce those, you know, the numbers to, to that point. One, one question I did want to ask the board, out of everyone that was polled here, is everyone here able to vote on this plan?
Everyone except for Don is able to vote. I missed two meetings. Yeah.
Okay. So, just so we can sort of recount things here, at this point in time, Mr. Kaliza, the only one absent, is, is the only one who would be in favor of the 26 unit?
Correct. It's myself.
And has he missed two meetings or is this his first one?
No, I haven't missed any meetings.
No, no. Mr. Kaliza.
Hmm?
Mike Kaliza.
This will be Mike's first miss.
First one here. So actually, you have one, two, three, you have, still have five voting members on the board, and out of those five, it looks like, is it three or four would be in favor of age restricted?
Correct.
Three?
Three would be in favor of the age restricted, two would be currently on, would like to see the age restriction removed.
Okay.
Who was your, who was your opinion, Bob?
Three non-aged restricted, two restricted.
One undecided.
You're undecided, right?
Yeah. Bob's undecided, yeah.
So we sort of have two and a half each way.
Yeah.
I'm sort of leaving here tonight with no better direction.
Five people would be voting. Yeah. We have two, we have two alternates.
Who are the five voting members?
It's Mike, myself, Joe, Devin, and Bob.
You have two and then one undecided.
Correct.
You have two undecided, uh, one undecided, two in favor of either way.
It's two and two.
So I, I have no better direction than when I came to the door.
But I guess the point is, the point is if, if the non-voting members' opinion is they'd like to see the age restriction, and we've heard from, and I, you know, we, at the last meeting where we had a number of people, we got the impression from the audience, and there was a few more, there was four, I think there was three or four different couples here, they all liked the idea of the age restriction, which was one of the reasons we moved in that direction. They were all nodding in the audience and afterwards, they were very much in favor of not having all 55 and older people in a, a community where they grew up and didn't have elderly people. And that was one of the real strong points that we directed the developer to look at this plan, because we were given the impression that a number of people, butters especially, did not want to have all seniors around them. They wanted to have a young community. They wanted to see children. So that was one of the reasons why we gave them that direction. And since that time, we've, we've heard that obviously members of the board have, do not like that idea. And, and you, I, I think you've stated either way. Dan, is there a way that he can combine age and non-age restricted on this site, or is that difficult at this point in time?
I think it'd be pretty difficult, because I, I believe the federal law requires five acres for an age restricted development. How many, what's the gross acreage here?
I'm not sure exactly what the acreage is, but I know there are some conditions to that. The other thing, too, is it, it could be difficult to try to mix, I just think, the dynamic of age restricted and then four-bedroom or three-bedroom houses so close nearby with everything. Building quite a few of these age restricted developments, oftentimes, a lot of people like to move there just because they don't want to, they're very concerned about children in the streets and things like that, very close by, right outside. They don't want to hear a basketball at 10 o'clock at night in somebody's driveway and things. And they, they appreciate being in a community because of that and things. So I think it's, it could be, it could be a real challenge. It could be there. I really, I, I really need some better direction than, than two and a half and two and a half type of thing. I guess the pressure's on you, Bob, on this. And, you know, I, I feel as though we've offered, you know, at least four or five different plans here to the ZBA. In good faith, we've actually come back with a, you know, we were asked to, to reduce it down to, you know, high 30s, low 40s. We came back at 26, took the age restriction off. I, I don't know where to go at this, this point with this plan and everything. You know, I've met with the neighbors, I've tried to respect what they've wanted for buffers and things with the 26 lot plan. I don't, I just don't know if I can do that with the ranches and give them the buffer they had. There's just, I just don't know which way to go with this. I'm just trying to be upfront and talk with the, with the board here with it. I need some, some direction, sort of one way or the other.
The plan that's on the screen right now?
Yeah.
I talked to the neighbors about this plan, right?
Joking.
Right, so you, you had, you had some agreement with the Brothers and Sisters plan?
Mm-hmm. I talked with the neighbors that are on the, the three houses that are on the north side of that. This plan involves, there's basically about a, a 25-foot setback from the, from the house to the lot line. There's not as much of a buffer. We had that 50-foot no disturb. Now you have 25 feet of backyard, and we were going to mitigate that with plantings and fencing and, and, you know, a large buffer of evergreens and things in that area.
Just to clarify, are these one-story units?
These are one-story, yeah.
And, and in this plan you presented today, these are all two-story?
What we did to try to mitigate the two-story is, is drop the elevation in some areas up to 14 feet, so the, the houses would be depressed down. And plus, they were 50 feet of still veget, you know, of, of natural forest there as well with that. Both plans have their pros and cons. They're both, you know, I, I think they're both very good quality plans. I just need to know which way we can go with that and everything. And, and to be quite honest, if we go with the age restricted, it's difficult to come back here and, and present this plan and then say, well, we want 38 units, or we're at 36 units. It, it's just difficult to try to make the numbers work at that point in time.
Comments? Tommy, I think what you're going to have to do is, it sounds, and again, I'm, I'm looking at the general population of the board, not the voting members. They, they, they want the age restriction. But I'll tell you, I, I will not, I cannot support 48 units. And I think you have to, and I, and I still want to see buffers. So somehow, some way, you're going to have to try to incorporate buffers and really look at this density and keep it at age restriction. You and I have to have a conversation with the chief of police to look at his issues. And I think that's paramount, because it affects everything if he requires a second entrance here. But I think that would be my marching orders, is what I'm hearing from the board. And we won't go back to a non-age restriction, so it's going to be an age restricted development. And, but I think you have to look at the densities. I think they're just, Mike and I's concern, we're the density. And again, I'll say it again, 84 Cleveland, 106, 108, 25 Rockwood are dense. For the amount of square footage and the acreage? It just, it's just too dense. And I guess that we have to put our foot down in town here at some point in time and decide what looks good for Norfolk and what's good for our community. And if the will of the board is that they want the age restriction, let's see if we can make it work. So I guess that's your path, is use this as your template, but try to work on your buffers? Work on your density? We'll have a meeting with the chief. I'll ask Rich to set up a meeting with the chief to discuss his, his concerns. Any other comments from the board?
The only other comment I had is just, on the plan with the 26 units, I did really like how Tom created just a curve in that road, so it wasn't just dead straight for 1,000 feet or however far that was.
Okay.
I know that might be a little bit more difficult on the, the denser plan.
I'm, I'm sorry, Devin, I missed that.
The, I, I liked on your 26-unit plan how you curved that road in. I understand that with the other plan, you're working with more confined spaces, it's probably more difficult. But I really liked on this plan how it wasn't, you know, 1,000 feet of just dead straight road.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments from the audience? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I didn't mean for my earlier comments to be understood as a vote one way or another for age restricted or not age restricted. I now want to take up your time teaching me remedial development, but I don't understand why the buffer can't be the same with age restricted as it is here in this diagram. It's, it's essentially the same number of buildings, so, and it may be obvious to all of you, and I just don't understand, but why there can't be an age restricted development on a single road like that that allows it, the development to be pulled as far as possible away from those butters on Village Green is not clear to me.
Okay. Tommy, do you sort of understand where we're heading?
I do, and I think next meeting, we're just going to end up in the same situation where you want 38 or 42 units on things and not going to be able to make it happen or, and I just don't see it going in a good space, a good place.
Okay. Positive outlook.
It's even though we were going down a path, we went through several iterations of this and we ended up with this plan here. Now there is, now there's a factor about, about age restriction, about accommodating seniors in this town, being affordable, and, and people staying in this town, if they want to stay here, which is a different factor. Then there's this other factor about, about a second egress, which is an important factor, because that may further influence whatever plan we go with, affecting the numbers and affecting really everything. And sort of one real fundamental question is, is there, can you even do a second egress in this? Because there was the whole issue about, about this wetlands. And where, I understand that there was a prior plan that was, it failed because of, I think, maybe I'm not even correcting this, but it failed because of that wetlands. So it's almost, you know, we were heading down this pathway, it almost had an emergency signal, now we've, a bunch of these little red flags just popped up and... we've, a bunch of these little red flags just popped up, and, you know, really to decide one or the other is just, you know, or even to suggest a hybrid at this point is, I think just, you can stop, put the brakes on to you, really think about this for a second, and really address some of these key issues before, I mean, how many other issues, you know, can you ask the developer to do to, you know, at what point are we going to get to where this makes sense? I mean, what else is going to pop up, too?
I just wanted to make a comment. The, the prior plan that I did mention was 15 years ago or so. I mean, there's been a lot of laws that have changed. You know, there's overlays with, with, you know, endangered species. There's just, that second means egress, going through the conservation area and going through the wetlands and intermittent stream and, and actually perennial stream in some areas where it's defined, it, it's really just not going to happen. It would be almost impossible to get that through conservation and comply with the regulations that are now here, as opposed to what were there, you know, in existence 15 years ago.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like a meeting with both the fire chief and police chief to discuss whether it's 26 or 48 or whatever, what their feelings are relative to the requirement of a second egress. And, and as I'm hearing from Bob, you know, if, regardless of which way we go, if there's a feeling that this is, you know, not, not in the best interest of the town from a safety perspective, to pursue either one of those or one over the other, we should understand what their issues are, and then be able to communicate to Tom to see if there's any way to remediate those issues.
And another question that I have also is that, you know, where you had mentioned things about the drain in school system, which is really a very, very important issue.
I should couch that by saying, too, I'm, I'm well aware of the fact that should Don sell his five-bedroom home, a family with children will most likely buy it. So my goal here is not to say that we will not see a new influx with this development if it is completely age-restricted. I think it'll just be more spread out over time as the units are selling, and not everyone who is moving into a unit will be selling a home in Norfolk. If people move from Franklin, if people move from Medfield, if my parents move from Cleveland to be close to their grandchildren, there will not be another house that is suddenly open to put kids into the school system, as opposed to a situation when you have 26 units specifically designed for and being marketed to families with school-aged children. So I think that it's beneficial if we can be serving a need for senior housing, increasing the number of affordable units in the town, and having it be a cost-neutral situation, where you're not adding to the, the debt associated with having kids in the school system.
I understand, and I agree. But the other question I have associated is that, is that a fact that we consider, what is it, 40 B?
What, the school system?
Yeah, the impact of the school system.
No.
No, it's an added bonus that we get to discuss now, because it's potentially age-restricted.
And as far as the police chief, the fire chief has weighed in and said he has no concerns. The police chief's comments and concerns are weighed, but they are not. They do not make or break this project. That's his comments. He has commented on some of our projects. He hasn't commented on others. So they're his comments. So we will address them with them, and I, I think we did try to set up a couple of meetings, but because of vacations this summer, he couldn't meet with us. But we will set up a meeting with Rich and address those concerns. Tom, how, what do you think you need for, or do you, do you feel, what do you think you need for time? Our next really meeting, I think, is for, for the enclave would be December 5th.
So it's, it's definitely an age-restricted. This isn't going to flip-flop again, because what I'm hearing in discussions here is that, want to talk to the police chief and get his concerns and see which one, which plan may be better off or anything. I, I guess I'm still nervous about spending a significant, significant amount of time and money and going down this path of trying to engineer one plan or the other.
You can do that.
You know, I, I appreciate being given some guidance here to go age-restricted, but it just seems like the board's going to then take into consideration comments from possibly the police chief or some other entity, and it may all of a sudden flip-flop back to another type of hybrid plan.
No, I think we'll just, I think we'll just talk to the chief, just understand where his comments come from. I think that's important, because prior to the plan going to 28 units, we had no input. And then when we went to 28 units, we then received input from the chief. So I guess I'm equally concerned that at 48 units age-restricted, we weren't asking for a second egress. When we went to 26, non-age-restricted, we suddenly had a second entrance. So I think we have to address that. Just understand it.
Yeah.
I think Dan makes a good point, is why don't we, why don't we ask our peer reviewer, Tetra Tech Sean Riordan, to take a look at these plans and give us some input before you go any further. We have, I think he has the PDF for the 48, and if you could send him the, this plan, plan this as well, we can have Sean take a look at this. In the meantime, that will give us two weeks to talk to the chief of police.
Yeah.
And then we can, we can get back to you, or we can have a meeting.
Okay. Is this, so it's tough to say, it's to tell you when we'd be ready for another meeting, so we'd continue this to November on this and wait for these comments to come back from Sean and from the, the police chief?
I, you know, I can talk to Sean tomorrow. If you want, we can continue this to November 7th, and that way if Sean, that gives Sean a couple of weeks to look at it. Would that work for you? And that way you're not doing, the only thing between now and December's, November 7th, you have to worry about is maybe a meeting with the police, chief of police.
I can't do this.
Hi, it's Joshua Baller. I just wanted to point out that Sean is, we sent the-
Can you speak up?
Sure.
It's hard to hear you.
We, we sent Sean this plan, the prelim grading plans, the, exactly where we were status-wise for the 26 on age-restricted development. His comments were, the direction that you're going looks great. It looks consistent with what was discussed. I have no comments at this time. Get me fully engineered site plans with all the other engineering that needs to go into this, and I'll provide the board with comments, but it's going in a good direction. I see where it's headed. There was, and I don't want to, you know, please speak to him tomorrow and let him, let his words be his words versus me paraphrasing, but that's essentially where Sean was at with regards to one versus the other plan. I don't think from an engineering standpoint, you know, there's, there's a significant concern with going in one direction or the other. It's not, it's, it's not an engineering item that we're trying to decide here. I, I will say that from an engineering perspective, as I listen to, if we go to the 48-unit plan, that the, that the pulling and tugging that I hear with regards to trying to achieve, you know, enough units for this to financially ink out for the development to move forward, and the desire to have additional buffer, the need to have a common area that also accommodates a septic system that's shared with all of these units, still needing to have a conservation restriction because of the environmental wetland resources and endangered species that are on the site. These are competing interests that won't make this plan what I think I hear this board asking it to be. It's going to look essentially like what's before you. There's, we can accommodate more buffer to the folks on Village Green and not negatively impact resource area buffers or the conservation restriction that we're trying to accommodate, that we've already had, you know, initial conversations with the state.
Josh, I think, I think the point of talking to Sean in the, over the next two weeks was not ask him about his technical opinion on this plan. It was more just kind of provide some global consulting advice, similar to what he's doing on, on the Abbeyville projects, and just give the board some just broad things to think about.
Okay.
I think that's more, I think what the goal was, not, right?
Okay. Thank you.
And, and to that point, I won't belabor it. It's the, and I guess Dan has done enough of them. 40Bs are becoming cookie cutters. This is all we can do. No one has to think outside the box. So I think one of the things we're having to start to look at is, we have to start thinking outside the box. And it makes, and yes, it becomes more difficult. How do you balance the profit with the buffers, with the density, with the roadways, with the septic systems, with conservation restrictions? And it seems as if, like in anything, the easy way out is always the best way. We're going to probably have to reinvent the wheel and try to find a way to marry all those different interests and come up with a good plan. And it's not easy. And I see what's going on in Medfield. I see what's going on in Holliston. I've seen some of the developments in Millis. And they're easy. They're easy for developers. They may not be at the best interest of the community. And I think we try to work together, but we never say, let's step outside the box and let's try to incorporate all these. One of my reasons for the 26 was to see what we got for buffers. We can do it. And I think we can do it here. It's going to take some work. It's not going to be easy. But I think there is a way to do it. So you cannot make the 7th, correct?
Right. I can do the 6th.
Amy, do we, can we get, can we get town hall? Can we get, when can we get town hall in November around? Can we get it on Tuesday the 6th, or is there, it says, oh, that's election day?
Oh, it's election day.
So we can't do that.
We can get it on Wednesday the 7th.
What?
Wednesday the 7th.
Dan can't make the 7th. What's SM group?
That's not related.
What about this, can we do the 13th? Veterans Day is the 12th.
I can't do that.
You can, you can't?
I'd have to check the calendar. It may be a Board of Selective meeting. I don't know. They, I might be able to get there.
Hold on one second.
14th is that?
On Halloween's the 31st.
Yeah.
What about the 30th for you of October?
Yeah.
Anything on the 30th, Amy, that you're aware of?
It's not the World Series, it isn't.
Oh.
30th of?
October. Can you make, Dan, can Tom, can you make the 30th?
I don't see any in my schedule.
Can the board make the 30th? Is everybody available on 30th?
It's Wednesday.
Hmm?
It's Wednesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, 30th, okay.
Everybody make the 30th? Devin?
Yeah, I should have the motion.
Why don't we try that? Do you want to try to, Dan, Tom, continue it till the 30th of October? So could we have a motion?
I make a motion, we move the hearing for the enclave to October 30th, Tuesday, at the town hall. At what time? 7?
7.
7:00 PM.
Room 124.
Second? Room 24. 124.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Are you going to stay while we discuss that?
Sure, yeah.
What was the date?
It's Tuesday the 30th.
It's Tuesday the 30th. At this time, let's, let's revisit the 25 Rockwood Road, the proposal foot port by the DPW director.
Do you just want to continue the hearing for Tuesday?
Hmm?
Do you want to continue?
Oh, we got it. Yes, we got it. We can, yeah, let's, we can do that first.
Real quick?
Yep.
Make a motion.
Do we have a motion for Nine Fruit Street, the continuation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move the hearing for Nine Fruit Street, that was scheduled for tonight, 7:15, to, is it going to be November?
It's going to be to December 5th.
December 5th at 7:15?
Mm-hmm.
To 7:15, 7:15 in town hall? Will it be town hall?
Yes.
Town hall, room 124.
Do we have a second?
Do we have an extra?
I'll second it.
Chris, I got a question.
Any discussion?
With Nine Fruit Street, have we talked to town council about whether or not, in addition to a dwelling, removes its grandfather to allow the conversion of a single-family dwelling to a two-family?
Ask the question again.
So the bylaw allows the conversion of a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling if the dwelling existed prior to the creation of the bylaw.
Correct.
Have we asked town council if, in addition to a house or the dwelling, would negate or essentially say that the dwelling no longer predates the zoning bylaw?
We asked Bob Bullock that, and he, he said that it did, it did not. And I guess the example I brought up was, my house is 1937. I put an addition on my house in 2005. Is my house still 1937, or is my house 2005? My house was built in 1937.
So I guess it's-
And there's nothing in the deed that says that I, I changed that date of construction to 2005. I didn't tear it down. So our bylaw doesn't address that without modifications to the existing structure. And that's, I guess, the issue, is that our bylaw does not address that. In other words, our bylaw would have to say, without any additions.
So because it doesn't say anything?
You can't, you can't, you can't, you can't put a restriction on something if it's not there.
I think your question was, the town council review it, which means, has anybody challenged this anywhere and created any precedent?
In town here?
Just anywhere?
Oh, be in town, it'd be in Norfolk.
It doesn't necessarily have to just be Norfolk. If someone has a similar case-
Some town, every town has a different, some towns are very liberal on this. It's, it's actually interesting, if you look at some of the towns around with the, but we can ask, we can, I think Bob Bullock did ask town council, but I will pose the question to town council again, for you, before the next year?
Okay.
Okay.
And then the next thing would be, should we be supporting a change in the bylaw?
Hmm?
If we feel that we should be supporting a change in the bylaw, we'd have-
Well, it would absolutely have to be a change in the bylaw.
So you'd want to go to the next step, too, if you feel strongly about it being that if you add to the house, really shouldn't have the ability to turn it into a two-family?
It's, it's more of a confusion factor than it's, it's, how do you determine?
Right, but do you want it to be clear going forward, that we should make sure that someone, or especially if you feel that strongly, we should make sure that the bylaw change is considered, if we feel strongly enough that, that we don't want to have this type of a question if it comes before?
Well, isn't there a committee that reviews the bylaws?
Right, but we need, we have to bring that to attention. You know, we just shouldn't stop with just saying, okay, we don't have a way to really-
This may be a ridiculous question, but with the bylaw committee, this reviewing bylaws, don't they consult with the zoning board? Or no?
Well, we can have a representative on the bylaw committee, too.
I don't think that, that one goes hand in hand with the other.
Not always.
Really?
Well, we have a bylaw change coming up in November. Have you been apprised of it?
No.
Okay, point in fact.
Yeah, so I'm just saying that we don't want to be faced with that question too many times again. Like, the question that's before us now, we don't want to have this type of, it's not written to the bylaw. We should, we should recommend maybe the bylaw be changed.
Yeah, no, I think if, if, if people on the board would like, want to change the bylaws so that it states that no house that has been altered after 1961 can no longer have that, that remedy, then it has to be put into a zoning change.
Yeah, if we feel strongly that we want that clarification, we should definitely look towards splitting the bylaw change. I agree.
Yeah, I think it gets, I think it gets very hard, because you've got to determine building permits back in the 60s and 70s, they weren't as strong.
Right.
So, you know, do you get into, what was, what was an addition, what wasn't?
Well, it may have to be very definitive of what the addition types are, if you don't-
Yeah. But I will ask, I'll ask town council. Bob Bullock, I think, already did, but I, and Bob Bullock weighed in and said that, from his perspective, it was the age the house was built. But that's, 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 as a zoning enforcement officer, we could certainly ask town council to weigh in as well. Okay?
So with no other discussion?
So we-
Yep. With no other discussion, are we all in favor?
Right, so we, I'll get to that. You want to take over, Joe? Anytime. Anytime, Joe. So we have a motion, we have a second to continue the public hearing till December 5th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. All right, back to us, 25 Rockwood Road. Dan, do you have any comments with regard to this?
I don't. I, I don't, I don't really remember the debate that we had on the sidewalk. I know there was a debate, and I, I believe there was discussion about the merits of keeping the sidewalk on, on that side of the street rather than doing a crosswalk, given the safety consideration of crossing Rockwood in that location. But certainly there have been, sidewalks are created right up against streets, and, and the vertical curb does provide that safety protection. But the point- And the vertical curb does provide that safety protection. But the point is, is that, you know, kids from the ages of, you know, 2 to 10 run all over the place. You know, I've got three of them, and I walk on a sidewalk in my town that's right up against the street. And I get very nervous taking them down the street. So, that's definitely a consideration as well. But I think you have to weigh those, those factors.
You know, I think we had, I think our concern during our discussions and deliberations and on the comprehensive permit was that we, we wanted a sidewalk on that side of the street. And, and we really demanded it. And I think all of us have been witness to people wandering from the laundry mat side of Rockwood Road to get the train, oblivious to all traffic. They just cross regardless of who's coming and when they're coming. I think, and I see at Hillcrest, they're much more respectful. But there's still times when people just walk across the street because there's a sidewalk, a crosswalk. And they feel they have the right, and they do, for the traffic to stop. I think adding another crosswalk from a 32-unit development to the other side of the street to have them go up and then cross the street again to get the train is just a mistake. I think a vertical sidewalk with a curb, as Dan just said, it, it happens in other communities. It won't have a berm of grass, but we knew that. When Fisher was going to do this, that was not a concern. We knew it would be a vertical sidewalk. It would have to be his vertical sidewalk. The, the stone wall's going to have to be removed regardless when Fisher does his development. And I think the other two units, the two houses going towards the center of town will not be affected. It'll just have a vertical sidewalk there and which will have to then crest down into the, into their driveways and then back up. So, from my standpoint, I think, I think what Fisher's doing, I understand the need to do it now. And I think that's why Bob came forward to us. Obviously, this sidewalk on the other side does not have to be done prior to the first occupancy permit. But Bob McGee would like to get on this project on the, across from 42 and adjacent to 42 Rockwood Road so that he can do the stumping, plant the grass, work on this blinking light proposal that they have before the selectmen. So, I think from my standpoint, I think it's a great opportunity to do it now. But I do not want to see us remove the sidewalk from Fisher's development side of the street up to the center of town. I don't think there was any talk, and who knows what the future will bring, of connecting that sidewalk to the sidewalk at Hillcrest. Certainly would not be a horrible idea, but, you know, there's always opportunity in the future to do something like that. That's my-
I would like to echo support for your comments because crosswalks are great and even having signs and sometimes some have flashing arrows. But as you said, there are people who just make the assumption, since the law says if you're in the crosswalk, the driver has to stop and allow you to pass. And so, people make the assumptions and blindly walk across the street. You also have a good percentage of the driving population who is not very conscious of those painted crosswalks. And they come up to see somebody standing on the side and they go, "Oh, my goodness, is somebody there? But I'm already doing 35 miles an hour and I'll just whip through it." So, I think from a safety perspective, we, we talked about the sidewalk from development up to the tracks. Once you get up into the tracks area, we have a very defined crosswalk there with a lot of traffic, a lot of pedestrian traffic that constantly walks across with, with trains loading and unloading. So, I think that the requirement for the sidewalk should not be withdrawn. I think it's an important safety factor.
I agree. Any comments?
I'd like to say I agree, but just one other question I have is, it's still going to be in the permit that they have to install that sidewalk prior to the first occupancy permit? What happens if the town just doesn't install that sidewalk?
Then he won't get an occupancy permit. It's in the special permit.
Okay.
Comprehensive permit. Right?
Yep.
That's it.
Okay.
That's Fisher's risk, right? I mean, Fisher's agreed to this.
That was more or less my, my question.
No, regardless of who does it, and in this case, it's going to be the town doing it, he will have to do it prior to the first occupancy permit.
I'm not saying the town shouldn't do the sidewalk.
Right, you just want to make sure that, yeah, no, this is part of the comprehensive permit. We, we won't alter that.
Okay.
I would note that if you're going to vote to accept this amendment, that then would impose an obligation on Fisher to do the work on, on the intersection of Boardman that you make that conditioned upon the, the town and Fisher getting that, that license from the property owner. I mean, you know, Bob said it's going to happen, but if for some reason it doesn't happen, then that puts Fisher in a possible situation of doing that work, so.
Yeah, I had asked that, the sidewalk that would be installed, it wasn't going to be outside of the easement. It was within the easement.
Yes.
The town has the complete space to do this, even though it has to be unfortunately a vertical curb. It's not going to be one of those things where you're taking anybody's front property.
There was no question that sidewalk was going in.
Right, there's no reason why it can't get done.
Now, the only difference now is who's, who's doing it is really the only difference now is who's doing it. It's no longer Fisher doing it. It's going to be the town doing it. And Fisher is going to take on another responsibility at that intersection.
Is there a critical benefit to having, having to do this arrangement? Why, why would the town just approach that, the corner of?
Because Fisher's paying for it now. He doesn't have to do the sidewalk until the first occupancy permit. So, if the town wanted to do this, the town would have to pay for it out of our budgets. Fisher's going to pay for this to be done now.
Pay for that, for that-
The corner to be graded, so, so that's the benefit to the town is that he's going to pay for it today. And probably, there's probably, I think, more work involved with what they're, because they're going to go down to the driveway on Boardman Street, which is probably about 500 feet. So, it's actually a pretty extensive area. They're going to clear and do seeding and stump grinding. Yeah.
My only comment with respect to sidewalk on the same side of the street, new sidewalk if you will, is that, my only comment would be that if it could fit in there, I'd put it in. In other words, my other concerns, it just seems so tight right there, you know? They can do it. I'm looking at the wall, somebody's fence along that side. Then you get up a little further, it seems really narrow and so forth. I mean, I would, I would suggest that sidewalk should be on that side of the street and not force pedestrians to cross over and cross over again.
And it will fit. Fisher, Fisher, when we approved it-
Yeah, I'm sure.
And he agreed that, because we asked the question, can a five-foot sidewalk, does it have to be dropped to four feet in order to get, and he said, "No, we can do a five-foot sidewalk," and the whole way.
God bless him.
There was even, I remember I asked a question because there was that utility pole right there.
Yes, yes.
I asked Fisher if they could still get that sidewalk.
Not from Fisher, no.
They showed on the plan that they could still get that sidewalk.
Since you have a comprehensive permit.
You haven't agreed away. Okay. I mean, you could vote, you could condition upon that-
Condition on the agreement with the neighbor as well as Fisher-
As well as Fisher filing that application too.
Fisher filing the application too. And it's really a minor modification, so he would just have to, so he just has to-
Yeah, you give the vote tonight, or you can do it, that's the sort of meeting.
Yeah.
You're missing the input from one member still.
Hmm?
You're missing the input from one member.
Who's that?
She's, she's down there.
No, I'm, I'm, I think the sidewalk should be right there.
She knows when to talk. I don't think she's very shy. I wasn't, I wasn't, I, no, Midora knows when to speak.
I usually, when not to speak.
Chris, are you able to take any questions from the public? Are you able to take any questions from the public?
Yes.
I don't know, deliberation? We don't, can't take questions.
Well, we can, we have input. We can ask, we can get more input from Mr. Henry. Sure.
We've invested a lot of time.
Hmm?
We've invested a lot of time in this project too.
Yeah, and this is not a public hearing.
Remember, remember what, remember what we're, we're here for. The only difference is that who's putting the sidewalk in.
Well, yeah, but there's also, part of this proposal is for the flashing light. So, I, I just wanted to sort of refresh everybody that we had a long discussion. There was some real concern about the line of sight issue. They went back and did a second traffic study with the speeds. And that's when they had come up with the solution for that Fisher was going to do the traffic calming light that flashed and showed your speed if you were above the limit. So- Right, so, so I just want to make sure that, that the developer is going to be held responsible for paying for that as opposed to the town. That would be my only question.
Okay, thank you. I think based on Dan's input, what I would like to do is ask Fisher to, to put the application before us. In other words, coming from Fisher, which has in it the facts of what he will be doing, what he'll be paying for, the blinking light, the work on that side of the street, but will also include the approval, whether it be license and easement. Would it be an easement or would it be a license or, what would it?
License is fine.
A license?
Just to do the clearing?
Clear, what type of license is that?
Well, if it's a temporary job, it's just a construction license to go onto the property and trim the trees. If what Bob McGee had in mind was something more permanent, like an easement to keep that area clear all the time, then that's, that's an easement. I don't know what he intended.
He said he was going to make it more like a park-like area, so I would think that would be a permanent easement.
So, the town would have the right to go in there and clear whatever.
Go in there and cut the grass. Any permanent easement.
Is there a discussion of town buying this or no?
No.
My, my question was, was it a dream truck combined, Joseph?
No.
Combined?
Buying.
Buying it.
Buying, no, okay.
They're not taking the land.
We're not taking, it's an easement.
Just so, but just for the record, what, what Bob gave us is not an easement. It's very, it's very different. This is a license. This, this says, "You have the right to go onto my property and trim trees." It doesn't say, "I'm giving you an interest in real estate on my property."
But is it giving the ability to go in there and also maintain?
Well, that's what we have to-
No, this is to go in there to cut trees and stumps, and this can be revoked at any time by, by the property owner.
So, I think we're going to ask Fisher, we're going to ask Bob to clear the stuff, have Fisher apply to the board for it. And then we'll vote at that time. And they can, and they can do that probably by our next hearing. Okay? Okay, so, we don't really need a motion to continue that, do we? Because it was really important. Okay. So, that's how we'll handle that, and we'll, we'll address that at the, how is it, November 5th, Amy?
It's 7.
7, right.
November-
I don't know.
We get more 10:30 or November?
We just scheduled for October 30th.
You got the 3rd?
We just scheduled one for October 30th.
That's the enclave.
Right.
We could do this, we could do this as well. So, we'll do this on the 30th as well.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. All right, do I have a motion to close the zoning board meeting for October 17th at 9:10?
Make a motion that we close the ZBA meeting of October 17th at 9:10?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.